To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Thanks for coming, everybody. First thing on the agenda is the public hearing, proposed zoning overlay district, draft marijuana zoning bylaw. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Made and seconded, okay. All in favor of opening the hearing? Any animus? Okay. Seeing how this is the first time I'm seeing this, I did a quick speed read on my, on my phone. With, with Adam, would you like to make a presentation at all, or just kind of speed read us through it, or whatever?
Yeah, so I guess I could.
Just introduce yourself for the camera.
Oh, Tom Harrington, town council.
Thank you, Tom.
So, it might be easier just instead of the speed read, just to kind of take you through what it actually does.
Yeah.
And, you know, Adam, maybe you could point out on the map the use districts that we.
Why don't we start with that, let's start with the zoning, the areas that we're talking about, okay?
Mr. Chairman, members board, I'm Lamontane, municipal manager fellow. As you can see, we've already discussed overlay District A and overlay District B. Overlay District, well, one of them includes all the highway business to include the overlay to allow for cultivation. And then School Street up over here would be area overlay B to be added for the school itself and the parcels. As you can see, I believe it's the back pages of your draft you have there.
Yeah.
And you can see the parcels that are highlighted of outside of School Street, like the old Baldwinville School.
Yeah.
And the parcels near there.
Yeah, and just for the record, everybody knows it's the former Baldwinville Elementary School.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's two, so there's kind of two, two different areas that we're talking about. One is the area where the marijuana uses are allowed by right. And Adam, you know, that's Use District Section three hundred dash nine dash A. That's the highway business that we're calling it. You want to just identify on the map the highway business districts, just so people know?
Yeah, the highway businesses, as I pointed out, I just, I guess it could be a little confusing because there's overlay District A, which is the highway business, which is the yellow parcels you see on this map. Just to clarify, the yellow parcels on this map. And overlay District B, we already went over, is the Baldwinville Elementary School.
Right.
And this actually is on Route one oh one, right?
Route one oh one.
Well, we're talking about all the highway business?
All the highway business.
So one of those parcels includes.
All of them?
Yeah, that was what Mr. Chairman and the consensus at the introduction that we.
Wanted to pick a zone and not a spot.
Right. Okay. And so we went with highway business, so it's.
Correct.
You can see that we changed the use table to allow this as a matter of right.
Okay. Somebody want to read this through, cause see how we're, this is the official draft, we're gonna make any ads or admissions to it? We need to do it tonight, to move it through? You think I'm wearing those glasses and? Oh, I've done stranger things behind the camera. I mean, behind the camera, not in front of the camera.
Do we need to, do we need to, do we need to word, uh, read it word for word, or we just want the council to explain what it does for us?
Yeah, if you want to do that, Tom.
Yeah, I can do that.
That's probably.
Alright, thank you.
So tho- so those are your, uh, those are the as of right districts. There, there are the overlay District A, or B, I'm sorry. Right, so I'm sorry, so overlay District A and B are both as of right. So that, that little property on School Street is as of right too, for cultivation, but not for retail. So I think what you're doing is, you're setting up an as of right highway business, as of right, and that's the small little single district. And then there are.
With a special permit too.
Especially, so if it's as of right, it doesn't need a special permit.
Correct. Yeah, but I wanted to cover that, just because we had discussed the special permit before.
The overlay, which is School Street, the former school, would be cultivation only, not retail.
As of right.
As of right.
As of right.
Means that.
It's allowed within the bylaws.
They don't need a special permit in order to operate a cultivation facility at the old Baldwinville Elementary School.
That's which is right next to my house. Which is, this is why we moved up here, is to get away from all of this. All, all because we had it where we used to live, they brought up our crime and the smell of the drug addicts and everything else along with it.
Okay, let me just interrupt you a little bit, everybody will be heard, but right now, we're just talking about the actual general bylaw itself. So.
I'm trying to understand it.
Yeah, no, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of get to the meat and potatoes of it, and we'll read through some of the captions and as to which way that the bylaws going. This needs to be brought in front of the town floor, the voters need to vote on this. So we don't decide like this board saying here, it's, it's a bylaw, it actually goes to town meeting.
Okay.
Okay, but we will, I will, we'll try to answer or take all your concerns, answer any questions just as we move forward, okay?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand it.
No, that's fine. Alright, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring up the special permit, because we did discuss, discuss that at the last meeting at length. So I wanted us to be clear on everything that we covered, and that we had consensus on before we came in here.
Yep, the, um, and everything, everything needs a permit, just because it's allowed in the area doesn't mean it's gonna be allowed to. What the applicant wants to do is gonna be what the town wants them to do. You know what I mean, it's not just like a free for all, it says we can do it, it says you can do it, but you still have to come to the board.
Okay.
And go through it, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I misspoke there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I just need a little more.
Yeah. Um, so. Tom, can you just read through the first like caption of what this whole thing's all about, the Craft Marijuana Cooperative?
Sure, you, you mean the definitions?
Yes.
Okay. So the Cannabis Control Commission, CCC, has a series of definitions, and I've gone out of page order here.
Do you guys have drafts of this? Do you have the draft? Laura, do you have any other copies?
I can go make some.
Would you mind, just making them so they at least would read along, or at least have a, the ability to follow along and read ahead of us if they like?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So the definitions, right, so we're adding these definitions to the zoning bylaw. And so cannabis is marijuana. The commission means the Cannabis Control Commission, which is the agency of the state that oversees.
State level, yeah.
Uh, the sale and cultivation of marijuana throughout the state. So Craft Marijuana Cooperative is, is a relatively new identification, and it's a marijuana cultivator comprised of residents of the Commonwealth and organized as limited liability companies. I, I think this is kind of their version of the kind of craft brewer of beer, if you know what I mean. So, so it allows them to, in small batches, cultivate, manufacture, process and package marijuana products. Marijuana, again, is, is as defined in the state regulations. A cultivator is someone who kind of grows, processes and packages marijuana, and then transfers it to us an establishment.
Sells wholesale, does that, does that sell to the open consumer?
Right. These, a marijuana establishment can include a cultivator, but also includes retailers, testing laboratories, research facilities and transporters. So the marijuana establishment is kind of the catchall for all the various business components of the marijuana business. The establishment agent is someone that the town can identify that's part of the corporation that's, that's working in your town. And is someone that, so that, that would be the town's contact. At a cultivator, they'd have to identify an agent, at a retailer, they'd identify an agent. That's who we go to, it's, like at a bar, they have the manager of the bar, this is kind of the equivalent of that. So marijuana for adult use is, is recreational marijuana. Testing laboratory, again, before the product is sold commercially, it needs to be tested. Micro business. Again, this is, this is kind of the other, the part two of the craft cultivator, they deal in small batches and, and get to do a little more under that small batch license. Product manufacturer, entity licensed to obtain, manufacture, process and package cannabis. Research facility means an entity licensed to engage in research projects by the commission, not sure I know of any yet. Retailers, that, you know, these are your commercial sellers. Transporter, so in order to transport marijuana from one location to another, you need to be a licensed transporter. So not anyone can do it. Medical marijuana treatment center, which was how this all got started, you know, only sells to people who have prescriptions. And then medical use of marijuana. We included this definition, it's kind of gone by the wayside with recreational, but people still do, you know, can use the medical use of marijuana definition to do certain things. But they couldn't do recreational. Okay, so that's, those are the definitions, and then we get into the assertions in the use districts, which make it a use by right. And then we discuss the overlay districts, and how the, how the planning board will deal with anyone seeking a permit.
Which is pretty much standard, you know, any site plan review application, the do's and don'ts.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that we're going to, are we going, as far as the setback requirements for whether it be retail or manufacturing or what have you, the state recup, they're, they had to put a number on it, so they put five hundred feet. It's up to the local municipality, they want to lighten it, or strengthen it, or whatever they want to do.
So yeah, so the five hundred feet is a distance from a, you know, sensitive receptor.
Right.
School or that, so we have the five hundred feet like the state.
Right.
But the setbacks, you know, the property line setbacks are all the same for whatever other business is operating.
Right, but what I'm saying is that, under five hundred foot, is this, is it something that the board wants to, you know, decrease or, or leave alone, or?
Oh, I see your point, yeah, you're right, yes, you can decrease it if you wish.
But what I'm saying is that.
We can increase it all the time, right?
Right, but I'm just saying, do we, do we handle it now, because we're not, is it not even brought up in here? Are we just going by the state's minimum requirements?
No, it is brought up in here.
Okay.
It is, it's on, underneath special permit requirements.
Three hundred, yeah, dash seventeen dot A dot six.
What is it, A six?
A six, yeah. And that's, that's, that's the state.
My thing is that, is it, okay, it says a straight line from the nearest point of the property line in question, nearest point of the property line. My other thing is that, we have a lot of, a lot of big parcels.
Mm-hmm.
And so there's a lot, a lot of, properties have thirty acres with them.
Right.
So you could have a property here, and your property line could be half mile away, and next to a sensitive or restricted, you know, area.
Yeah.
And so myself, I think it should lean more towards structure versus property line, because that's where the actual activity is going. Yeah, but that's just, because I, there's been talk, you know, I've talked to other communities and so on and so forth, and people that, you know, that are dealing with it, you know, as planning board chairman, I do my own homework, and a lot of communities are doing just that. They're doing away with the verbiage of property line and, and making it a structure.
Right.
Um, because you could have a school could own, it's on town property, and the town could own a hundred acres, and it pretty much
Right.
takes everybody in the loop right away. You know, just use it as a school, there's other restrictions, daycares and what have you, I think, right?
Right, and you, and, and so I, there's even, even a modification to that, where you could do it from the structure of the marijuana facility.
Right.
Because that's where it's happening.
That's what I'm getting at.
To the property line of the, you know, the school, because, you know, if it's the property line, it might be playground or whatever, but still kind of an active
Right.
area that you want.
So I just, if we're gonna do it, it's easier to do it now than it is to try to amend it, just getting into it, so, does anybody have it?
What if your structures are located even further apart, does that make it, it could end up being a thousand feet, or?
No, that's, that, that's, that's a good thing.
That's, yeah.
That's a good thing, we're talking as far as, if the property lines are a hundred feet apart, and the structures are three thousand feet apart, just because your property lines are within five hundred feet, is gonna, it will throw somebody off.
So for instance, if you had a, so, say that open, that the vacant property is located next to a school.
Right.
And you said the structure had to be five hundred feet from the property line of the school, as long as that structure is more than five hundred feet from this.
Then you're good.
You're good. The way it's written now.
Property line to property line.
It's property line to property line, so you could never have one of these facilities, but one of the school type facilities that you're trying to protect.
No matter how.
Or, or other uses that's protecting.
Right.
And, because the more rural you get, the more land people have, and it becomes more restrictive because of that.
Right.
So myself, I think we should go with structure versus property line, as far as.
Structure to structure, or structure to property line?
Yeah, either way, either one.
Property line.
Yeah.
I mean, structure to property line, or structure to structure, I mean, I don't know, I mean, whatever, structure to property line, but at least it just seems to, uh, the property line could put somebody on the three streets over, out of the loop.
I agree.
So, just looking long-term commerce, not saying, not saying there's anything gonna happen in that category, but I, you gotta, you can't come back and, you don't want to argue it every single time it comes up. You know, because we did, we had some other things we used to argue, I think it was meets and bounds, that we had an iron pin, and we went to grant, whatever. So we finally just stricken it from our bylaws, because every time it was a waiver, we gave every single time the subdivision came in, so.
Just a question of curiosity, what does that do to property that change hands or size or dimensions years later?
Or you won't be able to if you have.
Yeah, so they would, before they could divide that parcel, say, they would need a variance, because it's, it's the five hundred foot setback, think of it as a five hundred foot setback, you know.
So they would no longer be able to do that.
Right.
That kind of ties.
Well, no, how do you figure, because if they pull their, if they, if they, if, if the property that they're giving, the, whatever, redoing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is between the structure and the, the entity of a school or playground or whatever, it's, they didn't move the structure, they just sold land.
Exactly, as long as like the school isn't acquiring that parcel, it's okay.
Yeah, but then you're, then you're in grandfellow status, because it's like.
Yeah.
You zone, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You came in after the fact because of it, depending on which party you're looking at, but.
Right.
For, for, for an entity to subdivide, they're not moving the structure.
Yeah.
I mean, they wouldn't be able to build any closer, if that's what you're saying, because, because it is what it is, that's what we're saying.
As long as it wasn't a school, is that?
Yeah, this is only for the restrictions, it's all we're talking about.
Right.
And if anything, at that point, they're giving a more, a bigger buffer zone, because they're putting another building, another facility or something in between, so.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would say, you want to change that in the draft form?
So it would be helpful if you, to make changes if you just did a vote? So then we have a record that the planning board voted to make this change.
Everybody want to make that a motion?
I make a motion that we change
The setback.
Section three hundred dot seventeen dot A dot six, the setback requirement to be from
Structures.
Structure to property line.
Structure to property.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion on that? I'm seeing none, all in favor? Okay, unanimous? Okay?
Guarantees the building will be five hundred feet away no matter.
The building will always be five hundred feet away from the property line of the, of the, whether it be school or, whatever the other restrictions, and daycare as well have you.
Yeah.
Then if somebody comes in to build something closer, they're gonna be warned that you were not moving, you're not gonna do, you can't do it to shut the place down, because you were there first.
Mm-hmm.
I just think that opens up a lot more avenues and less, um, less waivers later on.
So basically, you're switching from property line to structure?
Structure of, of the proposed marijuana facility to property line of whether it be, of the questionable.
Of the sensitive. Okay.
Of sensitive properties, yeah. So actual structure itself, Adam.
Perfect.
The proposed structure, we'll say. Okay.
And just to keep in mind too, Templeton's limited to only one retail facility.
Is it, it is one one?
Yes.
I mean, it's up to the town files to issue as many as they choose, or is that town vote?
Well, retail, because it goes by the alcohol licenses.
I thought it was automatic two when that happened.
One, because it goes by a percentage of your alcohol license, I think it's twenty percent. So let's say if we had ten, then we could have two, but we don't have ten, so we are limited to one.
How many do we have?
I believe it's nine, eight or nine.
That includes, that includes like package tours, or just?
All.
All, uh.
Eight or nine, I remember, Holly and I went over it.
So long as it was a one, I thought it was an automatic two, because you would round up.
It's twenty, yeah, it's twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Yeah.
So Templeton is limited to one.
One point eight.
One. Can't round up.
Okay. And now, that's, um, once again, that's, I don't know if we bring it up in here or not, I think that's for another day, but is that town fathers vote that? Or is that, is that a town meeting floor, because you can put as many as you want, as a town, as a community? Would that be something we go to the town floor?
I think it's mandated under the state.
You mean.
No, that's the minimum states, that, that's the anti snob, that's the anti snob about, I mean, the anti.
You mean to expand the number of, like, so expand the number of liquor licenses?
The Cannabis Control Commission set that as a way to prohibit towns from saying, no, we have no bylaw, we don't want it, it's not coming in.
Yeah, okay.
It's a minimum twenty percent, but the town is at liberty to say, well, we'll take three, we're fine.
No, I think you need to.
But town floor?
I think you need to expand the number of liquor licenses you have, to expand the number of.
So it's not a, it's not a minimum, it's a set of.
That has nothing to do with this bylaw anyways, because that's more, that's more on the.
I just wanted that more as a public information point, just so people aren't like, oh geez.
I thought it was stupid, okay, but, yeah.
I just want people to understand that Templeton's limited to one retail facility, that's it.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I don't want people to think that there's gonna be retail popping up on every corner, that's not the case, it's limited to one, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
But there's no limit on grow, growing facilities, correct?
No, manufacturing?
Manufacturing.
No, it's manufacturing. Okay, um, alright, so where were we just then, we moved, that was A six, were we already at that far?
No, we were at, uh.
Yeah, we're just, basically right now, we're just into the application for, for citing and, and what have you. Uh, definitions. Administration procedures seventeen eighty-five, treatment centers. And, uh, Tom, is this, I haven't, so I'm guilty, I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing. Is planning board the sole permitting, granting authority?
Yeah, the department have to sign the host community agreement?
No, I'm aware of that, but.
But yes, you're the.
As far as the actual citing, applications, okay. Is there a, um, so the only thing like the Board of Appeals would be involved would be, would be a simple setback, normal zoning.
If it were a variance request.
Variance request, that's it, okay.
Right, and the, you know, the expanded, you know, under applications and procedures, which is, I think we were, you know, the, the expanded list of application materials is just because of the use.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anybody aboard any questions? Except for Dennis?
Under special permitting requirements, he says that adequate water supply, storm waters.
What number you want to ask, I'm sorry?
E.
E.
Uh, we have a information.
You want seventeen eighty?
This is under, uh, special permit requirements, E.
You shall have adequate water supply, storm water system, sewer disposal and surface, that's.
Are there any specific requirements above what would be normally?
So.
Depending on the growing.
Yes, yeah, for, particularly, grow facilities are high water users, so I think this just gives you an opportunity to make sure that, you know, either from the town or from the ground, they have the water to operate the facility.
Right.
Do we have to address anything on that, or?
No, the town would love to sell them water, and if not, they're gonna, Laura will make sure that the wells give them some good water, right?
And drainage, surf.
Well, surface strain, well, that's all, that's all planning, I mean, that's all, um, if it's.
If it's a permit process.
If it's a, if it's a storm water system, that's us, if it's, um, you know, sewage, of course, is both, it's either through a septic or, or municipality, or a municipal source.
If you're gonna be using an abundance of water, I don't know if there's any.
Yeah, a lot of them recycle their water too.
Yeah, but the water doesn't necessarily come back into the facility.
But depends on the grow, hydroponics, they use a lot of water, but that's, they're using the same water, it's not like it's just flushing through, because they, because they treat their water with
Right, and I, I don't know.
Vitamins and whatnot.
We have the level of detail yet on how they're gonna construct these facilities to know the answers to those, but.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's quite a science, I know a lot of people have, a lot of contractors have worked within these facilities, and it's a, it's not a ragtag growing in the back
Yeah.
of the barn, it's a very serious, expensive investment.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it, it's not a bunch of tables with tomatoes.
Yeah. Okay, Dennis, any other questions?
No.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? Anybody in the audience, care to ask a question? Hang on, Steve, you're with us. Uh, just, just, just announce yourself, just so we know.
Oh, okay, my name is Anastasia, uh, we moved here recently, about, uh.
Almost a year ago.
Almost a year ago.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We, we moved out of a pot town.
USA.
Um, um, we are definitely opposed to this, um.
I don't mind the, like, the cultivating part of it.
Hey, hey, hey.
Hold on for a second, Tom, the thing is this, is that, um, where, uh, where it is, we see that school right there, when I look out my window.
Oh, close to it.
We're, we're close to it.
Yeah.
And the traffic, number one, the traffic is gonna be horrendous with the construction and all the noise factor that, doing the cultivating. And, and what if there's some sort of fire, now you're gonna have a bunch of pot plants, you know, things in the air.
Yeah, I was gonna work.
This is, this is a very dangerous thing, um, it's going, how are the police gonna be involved in order to keep it, us residents, safe? To keep the traffic down, to, to keep the noise down? We moved from a very noisy, you know, area, city, to a nice quiet area, so we could not be afraid to maybe leave our door unlocked.
Or our windows open, or whatever.
Or our windows open, now, I'm gonna have to look at, at ADT to try to get.
Yeah, we moved over an hour away to move up here.
To make sure my house is gonna be secured.
Okay.
I, I mean, one, one evening, this is the reason why we moved, one evening.
It wasn't here, there's none of it up here.
Uh, we, you know, we were in an apartment, and we smelled smoke.
Our house almost burned down because of our neighborhood.
Our house, the apartment we lived in almost burned down. We're at one o'clock in the morning, because the people downstairs were smoking pot. I don't want this, I don't want any part of this.
Okay, well, first of all, there won't be anybody smoking pot at a manufacturing facility. And the traffic, with the exception of, of course, any infill, I don't care if you're building a new school, or doing apartment building, residential, commercial.
Okay.
You, you, you know, construction's gonna go on no matter what. You, you, you know, construction's gonna go on no matter what you're doing, so I mean, that's a, that's always a short term.
What about our property values? Are they gonna go down? Our house is now gonna be a little worthless?
Well, I can't answer that, but I, I, I'm pretty sure safe bet an abandoned school um would make your insurance rates go up.
My money got out of my pocket.
Okay, um, but right now, there's nothing going in that school. This is, right now, we're zoning, we're, we're putting in a bylaw in for the whole town. There's applicants that are interested in that, but no one's in front of us, we don't even have a bylaw yet, this is what we're trying to work on right now, it's gonna go to the voters. So if and when this gets adopted on the town floor, and I think we're having a special town meeting in November, I guess. And, and if the applicants do come in for that location, that would be the time that you air your concerns and we take everything. Through our consultants, through, make sure that we try to. Settle all your concerns, whether it be fire protection and and odor and smell and. And and just safety in general, and that, that's when your safety concerns and whatnot would be addressed at that time, because.
Okay, that's what we're looking into.
We don't want, I don't want to permit a facility that's gonna, no pun intended, go up in smoke either.
Right.
I mean, for the neighborhood what have you.
Right.
If anything, we're looking at it as in tax revenues for the town and, you know, putting some jobs in town.
But that's what I was saying, which is.
Don't interrupt the place, and avoid the fact that we have just an abandoned building in town, because I know, I do for a fact, the town doesn't have. Half a million dollars to tear that school down, so it, it would just literally sit there and rot and crumble down, because that's really the history of this town, that's what we do. We don't have any money to do anything all the time, um, so first things first, this bylaw is not being designed exclusively for that location. But that is one of several locations in town that there are interested parties, not saying that anything will even materialize out of the school. They may find out it's too much money for them to retrofit to even make it, I don't know, but this bylaw doesn't have an applicant. It doesn't have a name, it doesn't have a location, this is a townwide bylaw.
Okay.
And so if we don't act on this, then we, then anything goes anywhere, we don't want that either, that's why we're trying to say, these are the locations that would be allowed to go. And that's it, it's, it's basically, it's marijuana zoning is what it is right now. We're starting marijuana zoning with simple boilerplate bylaws that every other community is doing, so we are fortunate enough to have some of the other towns stacked before us. So we could take some of their um. Get a jumpstart using some of their, their, their own bylaws that they've already, you know, tested to see how they work for themselves, and we're trying to decide if to make it fit for Templeton, so.
Okay, so what we.
Can you make things strict, really, really, really strict, that it protects us as residents and homeowners?
When.
Really strict, I mean.
If and when an applicant, if and when an applicant comes in, then at that time we'll handle, we'll listen to every concern. And try to address them one at a time, because we're not gonna sign off and sign if this is something that hasn't been addressed, we don't, we don't deal with things that way.
But it will create jobs for.
Jobs are good, but.
Job, jobs are good, but you know, I wanna make sure my family's safe.
It's still a drug.
You know.
It's still a drug.
It's still a drug, no matter which way.
But quite honestly, you.
I don't wanna be, I don't want drugs being sold on.
Quite honestly, I'd rather see drug manufacturing in here than to see people hanging out in the, out in the, in the alley with needles in their arms too.
I, I, I understand that.
So to me, a clean growing facility is much, much better off than a, a place for.
Right, somebody.
People with.
Selling it on the corner.
People with addictions to hide out.
Walking around my house or sitting on, on my, next to my stool, you know, smoking.
And believe it or not, this, this, this homeless everywhere, and you know, God bless somebody, having them camping out in doorways and in that school.
Right.
It's not a safe place for anybody either.
Exactly. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
That makes a lot of sense.
Tom?
So I, I just wanted to um, uh, for the record, remind everyone that currently in Templeton. Because we don't have a bylaw in place, a marijuana establishment could locate in town. Without having to go through all the steps we've laid out here, so I look at this as a bylaw that restricts. Uh, marijuana establishments in Templeton to certain locations under certain conditions, but without this. It's, it's, it's allowed in many more locations with many fewer restrictions.
Okay, thank you. Steve, but please just keep it to a reason why we're here tonight.
I'm going, I'm going to speak.
Go ahead.
I'm not gonna be restricted to speak in my car.
Listen, I'm running a meeting, I'm running a meeting, and I'm just gonna tell you right now.
Look, you don't like me, that's fine, but I'm gonna talk.
Steve, I have no problems with you at all, I can shut this meeting down right now, it's easy, I can make you speak, let you speak. I'm telling you, is to stick it, keep it to what we're here for tonight, thank you.
I know what we're here for.
Stand up, or don't stand up, announce yourself with the camera, please.
Um, everybody knows who I am, I'm Steve Drury, eighteen Drury Lane, Templeton, Mass.
Alright, thanks.
The attorney is correct, this board had enough time, the state gave allegations for um, to zone. This board is, this board is zoning, spot zoning, in my opinion, for the application. For marijuana facility in that particular spot, and because there's some people right there that are concerned. This reminds me of similar situations in town where enforcement doesn't matter. And the bottom line is, is that if you're gonna have a zoning law, it may not get enforced, okay? And that should be said, because that's the most important thing, no one should be building a house or buying a house. And having to deal with any of that, however, I'm for cannabis, however, I don't wanna see the industry get into a situation like this. Alright, with a school situation where, where people um may be uh. Affixiated by s- uh, the smell mostly, or the noise because of the running operation. However, um, if those things are, are addressed and, and sensibly. Um, so that nobody is affected, I, I don't see a problem, but it is a verbiage. A verbiage being the fact that you're changing agricultural to what you're calling manufacturing. Which I take offense to, the fact of the matter is, this is a farm issue, and anybody in this state. In a farm issue in this town can grow marijuana or cannabis, however you wanna vacillate the word. The bottom line is, the federal government is allowed that, okay, Kentucky is growing, it's, it's twenty, thirty-eight states. So the bottom line is, is that this board to hold to the zoning would have to reject this. Because you're spotting a particular area, okay, and I'm for cannabis, totally for it. But I, I'm taking in the interest of those people right there or anyone else that's against it, okay? Because I, I know what zoning is, and I know how the town reacts to people who want zoning enforced. And we can't get zoning enforced, and to change it. Because the town wants, and this board wants to go with the town for money, it's not fair to the individuals that are already living here. And that means one individual.
Okay, thank you for your concerns. Anybody else have anything to add for this?
I am.
Okay, uh, Jeff.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Just uh. It is, it is a zoning bylaw, and it goes to town meeting, that will be the place to bring up the pros and the cons. And I would just say that that building is, is not up to fire code today, so by whatever goes in there. Brings it up, it will actually be a safer environment than it is presently, that's an old school built in the twenties. It, it's not up to fi- any fire codes today.
Yeah, I walk by when I go for my walks, it's actually.
You would actually be safer with that building being rehabbed, but the kind of a, ahead of ourselves. Because the bylaw goes to town meeting, that will be the place to go and to voice any of your concerns. Pros, cons, or whatever, uh, before the town votes uh for this bylaw, because the bylaw has to be approved at town meeting.
I just don't wanna smell it, I don't wanna smell it.
We just don't wanna be smelling it or.
That's, that's, that is the process where you, where you would do that.
It's also the reality we live in, is the state of Massachusetts legalized it.
Just a question of curiosity, is there any odor from a growing facility?
There can be.
There can be?
There can be, so.
Uh, would it be, not from the plant itself, would, would it be from fertilizers and stuff or what?
So when the plants, this is just my understanding, uh, when the plants flower, it can get smelly. And so that's, that's why the bylaw authorizes the board when permitting a facility. To make sure they have the necessary air exchangers filtration, air filtration systems in place.
Cabin filters.
So that the, so that if there is an odor, it stays within the facility. Or is, you know, kind of chimneyed out of the facility without impacting the neighbors.
Alright, sir.
And if it, and what happens, if it does, you know, like, start smelling up the neighborhood.
Well, what we, when it comes to conditioning, any business in town, if we list it into conditions, it always gives us the right to revisit it. And so if we hypothetically, we'll just use that location for example, if, whatever they do to mitigate the smell, what have you. From the beginning, if we don't feel, if you don't feel it's adequate, we're still having issues, we always keep it open as far as the permitting itself. Where we can go back and revisit it and make them redo it and 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 make it better and so on and so forth. What's that?
How long will that normally take?
Well, right now, we don't, like I said, we don't even have an application in front of us, so you're asking hypotheticals, but all that would be brought up during the if. Application in public hearings at that time, I mean, we'd have to have, the applicant themselves would prove to us, and we would always hire a peer review. Which represents the board, the town, to, to go back and forth.
I don't mind it going in there, you know, saying, you know, hey, it's whether they're gonna grow it, you know, there's not gonna be.
There's no re.
Be smoking it.
No retail, no.
No, we just don't wanna be smelling it, we don't want the drug addicts coming in.
There's no, there's no retail, there would be no retail allowed in the, on the overlay district, it would strictly be manufacturing. On, on, on that particular zone. Anything else, Adam? Okay.
Uh, Chris Lang, in order at seven forty-one, Baldwin Road Road, so I'm the last house on the street, my property's directly across. So I, yeah, I was initially nervous about it, but I don't know, are these all filmed where you can resee, watch them later? So back a few months ago, sixteen, and I know we're not talking about this right now, but just a point, sixteen twenty labs came in, because they were the proposal of that. And I had never seen such a professional presentation, they answered all of our questions, and if you would watch that, I think that might convince. Some of the questions you're asking have already been answered, at least from that proposal, and I think that, having watched that, the carbon filters and everything, I think you would be. I'm assuming.
A YouTube channel.
On the YouTube channel.
Okay. Uh, hang on, hang on, one more time, Adam?
I can't, Chris brought up a great, great point, Chris also served in the Baldwin Elementary School Disposition Committee with Dennis Retch as well. Uh, but if you, anybody wants to, we have it all posted on the webpage, templetonma.gov, scroll to the bottom of the page. Click on projects, and under projects, you then click on marijuana establishments and everything would be right on the page.
Maybe you could write that down for him, Adam, before you leave today?
Well, it's, it's on their notices too.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It's on your notices?
I'm just, I mean, scared about this whole situation.
Okay, well, right now, if, if this is a bylaw for the town, it's not site specific as of right now. Um, so there's still a long ways to go, um. Anybody else on the board have anything else, any added deletes to this proposed draft before we try to finalize it? The exception of distances?
It looks pretty much like what we talked about last time.
Okay, do we um. Want to take a motion to close the public hearing?
Are there any other issues that we should anticipate?
Excuse me, put in order, I'm, I'm at, need to be recognized.
I see you standing there.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to, uh, I mean, I wanna meet, come back another meeting just to sit here and vote, I mean, just to come and close the public hearing, there's no more.
I don't think there's anything else.
There's no more input from me, I don't have any input.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on closing the public hearing? Seeing none, all in favor? Right, good, public hearing is closed.
Let's thank everybody for coming.
Thank you, but it's, it's not over, okay, it's, it's far, this is just the beginning for us, everybody even just learning, okay?
It's just very scary.
Well, I, 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 I don't mind, I understand, you know, town needs to make money, you know, I understand, yes, the town needs to create jobs.
The money, this right here is actually basically trying to protect the town from it going just anywhere and everywhere.
It's not like we can say, no, you can't come to our community.
But if the town votes us in, then there's only certain areas that, in other words, they can do it in.
Also stops other ones from coming in.
Just allows us to control it.
Just to go on record as uh, we've been shown that I wasn't allowed to speak.
Are you smoking?
Wouldn't let me speak, I had my hand up, they wouldn't let me speak.
Yep.
I have very important information that you need to know.
Well, you know what?
You wouldn't tell me.
You should have brought it up when you had your hand up instead of talking about stuff that didn't pertain to the hearing, Steve, you get sidetracked, guess what?
That's your opinion.
I get sidetracked too, I forgot to call you, okay?
Yeah, you got sidetracked, you even recognized me right there, you saw my hand, you're a liar.
That's right, I seen you, but I forgot to call your name. Guys, such a pain in the ass, okay, um. I have no patience for his infant-like behavior all the time, it's ridiculous, try to run a meeting, not a babysitting class. Do we need to vote on that as a board, or we just like close the public hearing, so that's what I'm thinking?
So you, you've closed your hearing.
Yes, we can.
You have, you are either gonna submit a report to town meeting in favor of it.
Yeah.
Or opposed to it, or with corrections, so I think you have one correction, which you voted on.
Yeah, I would just like to see, take a motion to accept this as written with the, with the one correction that was made in relation to the setback. So we can move this thing forward.
Sure, make a motion that we accept as drafted.
And, and revision, with revision?
With revisions.
And, I'm sorry, may.
Go ahead, yeah.
And so I'd add to your motion and recommend approval to town meeting with your edit.
Yeah.
Recommend approval to, to forward to town meeting with that.
Planning board approval, okay.
I'll second that.
Well, anybody, any conversation on that, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thanks very much.
Have you gentlemen?
So when is this all take place?
Well, it's like, you, so you just, when you come to town meeting, everybody has the right to be heard.
Pay for the mail telling us this was gonna be here tonight, that's how.
Yeah, this is just, this is just a public, we've already kinda discussed the notions of this coming through.
Right.
These are like boilerplates, it's standard permitting.
Right, I understand.
Information, and so now, we, this board won't discuss this, again, the next uh format, like Jeff had said. Who was also a selectman, is on the town floor, is town meeting, would be special town meeting.
March fourth?
No, no.
End of October or?
It's a special town meeting in the fall.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So will we get something in the mail, let us know?
No, that's a public, that's a whole townwide meeting, that's a town, it's on the website. Dennis, what do you got?
I just wanna remind them after a new town, that they're registered voters.
Okay, well, first of all, all, if we have any new business? Seeing none, all in favor to adjourn?
You wanna do the minutes?
Oh, minutes, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I missed the last week, oh, did I miss the last week?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, I did.
I'll make a motion that we accept a minute first.
Motion's made and seconded, accept a minute, all in favor? Okay, I'm gonna abstain, because I wasn't there.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, seconded.